Welcome everyone, I'd like to call this meeting of the advisory union board to order at 6:02 PM. So welcome, everyone, meeting called to order, let's do a quick round of introductions, Fatt TV is with us and it's always good for the public to know who we are, let's start with Paul.
I'm Paul Bohuski, I represent Rockingham on the Union High School Board. Rick Holloway on the Rockingham Board.
I'm Lily DePino, I will be, if you say so, your new math coach and coordinator.
Alright, welcome.
Deb Carden, Director of Inspection and Innovation.
Andy House Superintendent.
Sheriff Charles Westminster Board and Sheriff this one.
Bishop Kibby, Rockingham Board.
Caitlin Deshane Desmond, Rockingham Board.
Erin Longstreet Westminster Board.
Lynn Morgan on the Athens Grafton Board.
Mary Howard Hall on the Grafton, from Grafton on the high school board.
Outstanding, and to the screen, Kathy.
Kathy Siana Goodwin, Athens Grafton Board.
Thank you so much, alright, I think that's all the board members tonight, thank you so much. And the next item is to have any adjustments to the agenda.
I do have two, and I apologize, I didn't get on the agenda, two other appointments, which is Margaret Davis and John Stanley. We can go over those, and then also, if we could move 7B to right after review of the minutes.
Alright, we'll do that, thank you sir, very much, so those are the adjustments.
That is, those are the adjustments that I have.
Alright, then at this point, we'll call for any communications and public comment, if there is.
My husband and I are here because we are concerned with the buses. I'm sure the less word, my daughter. Has been having bus issues, they're both being picked up and being brought home since March. Excuse me. March 19th, March 18th it started. Off and on, now, there is no bus at all, and she has to rely on friends to bring her to school or bring her home. I work at Moon and Engineer, and they are not very, they have been kind of understanding, they get it. And my husband, Brian, he's away mostly. So the only person she can rely on is either friends or myself. I have three questions. One, why? Now, why are we having so much problems with hiring bus drivers that we can rely on? Or if they're sick or something comes up, how come there is nobody being able to pick up their runs? And three, I have not only once have I gotten a phone call from the robo-call, saying that my child is not being picked up. We furnish paperwork to the schools three, maybe possibly four times a year. Yes, she's 16 years old, but I don't like her standing outside for 40 minutes.
Alright, well, thank you so much for making the effort to come in with public comments. We don't get into a dialogue about it, but I know the superintendent is taking notes, your concerns are recorded, and I am sure so will get back to you right away.
There are several other families on Pleasant Valley Road with smaller children that are standing on the side of the road waiting for a bus that's never going to show up. Because there's no robo-call. They just, I don't know how many times I've been three hours out of town, I left at 3:30 in the morning, get a text from Sydney at 7:25, there's no bus dad. We've even gone to the extent of buying the car, you just drive yourself to school, I'm enough of this business, because I'm had enough.
Well, she's old enough to drive, I mean, there's elementary school, there's middle school kids also that are not being picked up. And their parents work as well. So, that's why we're concerned, we want to know, how can we fix this?
And I get it, I understand that this whole district is understaffed, I get it, everybody's understaffed. Even where I work, we're understaffed, it's hard to hire good people. If throwing money at it would cure the problem, I'm all for it. I mean, I retired out of the drilling and blasting business, and got lured back into it by a deal that I just couldn't refuse because they threw money at it. You know, the working, the working age is aging, and there's nobody coming in to fill the shoes, I get it. So it's, I can see where there'd be an issue.
Again, we appreciate your concerns, and so thank you very much, for some reason. Thank you again, any other communication or public comment? And then with that, we need a motion to approve the minutes of May 7th, please. A motion.
So may.
Rick Holloway made the motion to approve the minutes from May 7th, any discussion, any corrections?
I just had a question.
Sure.
There were a couple of votes that we had yes and no votes on, and the recorder didn't write who the yes and the nos were. Andy or is that supposed to be in record in the minutes, I don't remember.
I would have to check, I want to.
It may be.
It may, may need to be, and we can go back, we video record everything, so we can go back and still check that. Small man.
Thank you.
Okay, yes Lynn. We're saying that five districts applied, only two districts received it. But it doesn't, yeah, the previous sentence said Esser, and I know that's not that the money was applied.
Oh, we put in there what was applied.
21C.
Yeah, I thought it was. And so thank you for that correction. Any other corrections, additions to the minutes? With that, I think the motion that Rick made might be amended to correct that the attribution of the grant, to make sure that it switched from Esser to 21C.
And just looking at it, it was, we previously funded under Esser, it was 21C, so we just need to add the 21C at the beginning of that sentence.
Right. Alright, so Kathy, I'll go to you, do you approve the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, and those in the room may signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, any opposed? Okay, thanks, minutes are approved, and with those corrections. Alright, with that, now we're moving up the topic of appointments, so Andy, please.
Definitely, and so I think I'll start, just because Ms. Cardane's here with Ms. DePino also, but, and defer to her, we have two. With Deb, we have two candidates we'd like to bring to you, we're really excited about both of them, so Deb, I'm going to defer to you at this point.
Please chime in, don't leave anything out, I'm so excited, we're in the two candidates that we have. First, we have a newly shifted position, Kate Keans Instructional Coaching Position. After really identifying the need for math expertise in our district, we shifted that to be a coaching coordination role. So Coach slash Coordinator. And I'm thrilled to bring Lily DePino, who has been and working with our teachers and with our district as an ALN ALN is All Learners Network, and that's who we contact with for our, to seek out great expertise in that. Lily has been a coach and women's Southeast, we worked closely together through COVID. She is someone who, I had my favorite quote, a teacher that she worked with said, "I never knew what it felt like to be coached until I was." So, she teaches through BMI, so I am just thrilled, we have a great asset coming our way, and I would introduce. Second candidate is, I think it might be Margaret that's on the line. Margaret Davis comes to us with a wealth of experience for the position of English Language Learner Teacher. And she's been a foreign language teacher, she's taught German, she's taught elementary school. The committee unanimously was thrilled with her interview, she comes just from right off the river in Springfield. And we would like to welcome her as our English Language Learner Teacher.
Standing. Do we want to take, I see other appointments, so what's the?
I think if we, to do one, we want to take them one at a time on the appointments, yes.
Alright, so we, let's start with Lily DePino, we need a motion, please, to I move to accept Lily DePino happily and excitedly. Alright. So you're in has made that motion. Any further discussion or questions? Anybody? Alright, then all of those in the room signify by saying aye if you approve this motion.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Kathy, your vote please? This was the motion, yeah, thank you, we saw that, alright, that's very good, so again, welcome Lily, thank you for your interest, thank you.
I'm in a meeting on Zoom, yeah.
So then the next motion we need has to do with Margaret Davis. For the appointment.
Is it a full-time position?
This is a full-time, yes, and it was approved in our budget, we've had an increase in our student population. As Deb had indicated, Margaret comes with a wealth of experience in working with students who are second language learners, and really excited about how she can help work with not only our students but our teachers and improve their opportunities.
And she said the teachers pay scale.
Correct, yeah. I'm sorry?
You have to know where she.
Yeah, it would be a master plus 30, step 18.
Well, I don't know, Margaret Davis, English Language Learner Teacher, masters 30, step 18.
Alright, any additional comments or questions? Alright, in the room, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, alright. Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you, perfect. Alright, well again, welcome to both of you, and thank you. Andy.
Alright, so our next one is Cynthia Brown. So one of the things we're really excited about is we will have all in-person special education teachers here at the high school, for sure. We will still have our virtual speech person. But I believe that with this slate of candidates, we will have all in-person special educators this year, so a lot of credit to Heather Willis Doxy for her efforts and for Lori Whumsberry, their efforts in really attracting some really quality candidates, so. The first one is Cynthia Brown, and she would be joining us as a special educator, moving here from New Mexico. But she comes with a good deal of experience. Her spouse is also a candidate for a position here at the high school, so she would be coming in at a master plus 30, step 7. Do you want me to list them all, or do you want me to go one at a time?
I think we should go one at a time. On the list we have here, the C. Brown, looks like he or she is at the high school.
That's Cynthia Brown, that's, yes.
But at the high school?
Will be, yes, at the high school, yes.
Okay, so we need a motion, please? I move to accept the appointment of Cynthia Brown as a special educator at the high school, masters plus 30, step 7. Thank you, perfect Caitlin, thank you so much. Alright, so the motion is on the floor, any further discussion? Okay, Kathy, how do you vote please?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and those in the room signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, welcome to Cynthia.
Excellent, thank you, the next one is Tim Ferguson, and Tim is will also be at the high school, so the, and him is joining us, he is he's been working in some, in the non-public sector with one of the non-public schools, and that we send some kids to. But is real eager to come in and work towards what he needs to do as becoming a special educator, he would be a first-year teacher for us, but his energy and his knowledge background of students with disabilities and what their needs are, we're really excited about it, so him would be a bachelor, step 1.
I move to accept the appointment of Tim Ferguson as high school special educator at, oh no. Bachelor step 1, thank you.
Thank you very much, again, any discussion and questions? Okay, in the room, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you so much, alright.
Alright, and then I'll round out the high school with our last one, which is Mike Ferguson.
No.
No, no, oh my god, Nausic, yeah, Mike Nausic, sorry. Mike is currently a paraprofessional with us here at the high school. He has, has teaching experience, has worked in districts in other states. But is looking to move into that role, he's done a great job as a paraprofessional for us. And he would be coming in at a bachelor step 5.
Can you spell his last name? Say it again, love the spelling.
N-L-S-S-I-C-K. Nausic?
It's not on my version, so I just.
An email from Nicole. Yeah, so I apologize, he was a, just had an opportunity to speak to him yesterday, so I'm, me personally, had an opportunity to speak to him yesterday, so.
So his full name is Edward, is this?
Edward, yes, I'm sorry, he goes by Mike, yeah.
Oh yeah.
Just a clarification, Andy, you said he's he's applying to be a full-time teacher or a paraprofessional?
He is, he's, he is currently a paraprofessional and moving to be only teacher with us.
So it's a trend, he has to be certified at some point, he's, what's the terminology?
So we will, we will need to file provisional for it, yes, so.
So why don't you explain for folks what you have to do with the provisional, what that means?
So typically, if a person doesn't hold a Vermont certification in any area, we can apply for a provisional, which then allows that person to work with the AOE, they have up to two years to meet whatever certification is needed. Sometimes it's just a peer review, because they have a wealth of background. And, but sometimes it's certain courses that they might need to take, or they might need to take the praxis, or something of that nature, so it's the AOE who basically dictates to them what they need to do, and they have two years to complete that provisional.
How long has he been here as a parent?
He's been with us for one year as a parent.
Has he done teaching?
But he's taught four years in other districts, yes, has a background in mathematics. And our goal is to look to include him in our math classes here at the high school, but as well as supporting kids in their needs around IEP goals in math.
And so, in a sense, the reason for the provisional is that he doesn't have a Vermont license, he has had a teaching license. A teaching degree, okay, very good, thank you. Alright, we need a motion with all of that. That Edward, known as Mike Nausic, be accepted and at a bachelor.
Bachelor's.
Bachelor's step 5. Bachelor's step 5, yep. Well, this is collaborative, we'll get there. Alright, there's a motion on the floor, any further discussion or questions? Alright, those in the room will signify by saying aye. Kathy?
Aye.
Alright, Andy.
Alright, the next one won't be so bumbling around, so Jennifer Durham is currently a teacher at Westminster Center School, and during the budget process, we had to reduce some staffing. Jennifer sadly was one of the last hires, so therefore, in reduction, of course, but she's duly certified as a, as a elementary teacher, but also as a special educator. We had an opening at Westminster Center School, and so provided a special educator resigned, it provided us an opportunity to keep her in the school working with the kids, so she's formally resigned from Westminster, did that actually, did that go, yes?
I don't.
Might still need to come to Westminster, she has to do a formal resignation, but we're looking to get her hired here, and let's have her resign there, could be filling Aaron more of these spots.
So although well, no, she wasn't on our teacher roster, so.
Correct, she, yeah, right, right, so, thank you.
So, we may hire her.
Yes.
So, I'd like Ashley to make this motion. What's that for she? She's lots of experience, go ahead. She's right now a master step 14, so she would be step 15 masters.
Master step 15, thank you.
So I would be pleased to make a motion that we hire Jen Durham to be a special educator at Westminster Center School with a masters step 15. Any discussion? I will just add, but she's been a great addition to the school, and we feel very fortunate having to reduce our staff by two to be able to have her stay there, and the fact that she's duly certified is just a real gift. She's fit right into the school, and she is highly experienced, as you can tell, so that's great, that we did not lose her to this whole issue. I will also make the comment that in her interview process, because I was a part of that a couple of years ago now, she was really attracted to the WNESU. She had heard good things about our supervisory union and wanted to come to this area, so we're very pleased with that. So motion on the floor, all those in the room signify by saying aye if you do. Any opposed? Okay, Kathy?
Aye.
Alright, well so, delighted that Jen will be able to stay with us. Next one?
So the last one we have is John Stanley, and this would be for Westminster Center School. So Dana Filatiko, who was a special educator at Westminster Center School, has gone on to some other opportunities, and so he would be filling that role. John has a lot of experience, not only in regular teaching, but in special education teaching. And just, you know, excited to have him come on and join us, he's coming from across the river over in Hampshire, and so John, who's joining us as a kind of, he'd be a master plus 30, step 8. Thanks.
And his role specifically? Especially if you said.
He will be doing special education, correct?
Alright, we need a motion please.
I move that we accept the applications of John Stanley at a masters plus 30, step 18.
Alright, thank you, any further discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Alright, Andy?
Thank you, I appreciate that, I mean, it's, unfortunately, unfortunately, it's that time of year where we're, we have staff that is moving, but we're really grateful to, like I said, to have in-person special educators, to have Lily joining us, to have Margaret joining us, I think it's going to be a great experience for our students, and that's most important.
Thanks for the interview process. Alright, with that, we can move to reports, and the first one of those is the superintendent's report.
Yeah, so just a couple of things, and I know later on, we'll go on to the World School Alliance, but I think with the what's moving hot through Mount Pilia right now is H454, which is the Educational Financing Reform Bill, if you will. Which, without going into too much, the governor made a proposal for five districts throughout the entire state. Lots of work going on, the House passed 454, which essentially would eliminate supervisor unions, would set minimum class size averages, kick me here, I'm doing this off the top of my head as I go through it, but would also create a foundational funding formula. Which I think it's important to point out, because all the bills that are going through are currently talking about that, is a set amount that we would get per pupil. Which would also take away any opportunity for taxpayers in a local town or district to actually vote on a school budget. There'd be an opportunity to maybe increase a little bit, but that would be the set amount that we would be receiving. So 454 was passed out of Um, so four fifty-four was passed out of out of the House, it went to Senate. Um, it got um changed quite a bit in Senate Ed. Came out of Senate Ed, bless you, went to uh Senate Finance, Senate Finance made some more changes, came back out. Um, there were a lot of amendments on the floor. They passed a bill that was close to the original House bill. And now it's gone back, and now it's in conference committee. Um, and it's supposed to get voted on by Friday. And so that's. Kind of the state of, but I know you've been up there, so I don't know if there's anything I'm missing, and. Um, there's, there's some stuff with independent schools in both bills, um, taking monies away from independent schools or adding money back in. Um, and um. And different weights, and anytime. They take a weight in a foundational formula, anytime they add a weight on, so there was a a weight added at the last minute for C T E. Which then dropped the base for the foundational formula. Um, the modeling that I have seen. Would actually, other than Grafton. Uh, would actually provide more money to us than what we currently um have. Um, but what comes with that is an increase in taxes. And so what I, the modeling I saw was an increase of twenty percent for, say, Rockingham, that's not a twenty percent. Direct tax increase, I want to be very clear about that, I have not seen tax modeling.
Right.
But there, that would indicate an increase in taxes, where Grafton would see a reduction in their, bless you. In their overall budgeted money that they got, but they would also see a decrease in their taxes. Um, there are some districts that are looking at like six million dollars in decreases, so, um, the. The term that was kind of, or 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 comment that was played out was. Those districts that have been fiscally conservative for all these years are actually now going to have to pay. Because they're going to have an increase, and those that have had these huge budgets. Um, are obviously going to see a decrease in their taxes, but are going to see a quite a shortfall in the amount of dollars that they have to fund their current education, so. Um, tho- those have been the highlights that um I've been picking out, and I know there's been a flurry of emails over. Quite a bit, so, um. But I don't know if there's any quick questions about that, because I instead of running through everything, so.
Oh, I just wanted to be super clear, the twenty percent increase is twenty percent in the budgeted amount, not in the taxes.
Correct, though, I've not seen any tax modeling that. Would, would that twenty percent increase? Equal a one percent or?
Yeah.
Higher than twenty percent, I don't.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I didn't think that there was also any financial modeling about this. This design about having five. Mega places.
So that the the governor's plan, this is all in in response to that?
Yeah.
So these are the two plans, so the governor's plan is not in the proposal at this time, so, um. I, I, yeah, I don't, haven't seen any modeling on that.
And so if you were fiscally conservative, you're going to lose money. I mean, basically, you know, it's sort of like, you did a good job. So if you were fiscally conservative in the time, then you're trying to get less money, if I'm hearing this right.
And and the the minimum class. Size average is per building. And so, um, and and there's some variations between the two bills on the numbers of students, like for kindergarten or or. Or first grade through third grade kind of thing, so they're they're, um, but. Uh, some folks thought that it would be like in Rockingham, because we have Saxons River and Central. That it would be a minimum of the two buildings, no, it's per building. Um, the other piece that's in four fifty-four, I'm sorry, just remembering this, is it would set. Um, school districts at four thousand students. And the Senate bill. Um, set it at no more than eight thousand students, but didn't set a, didn't set a minimum. So, uh.
So that four thousand is a maximum when they can have in the districts, is that what?
Under the House bill, it's 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 districts would be four thousand students, yes, minimum four thousand.
Oh, minimum, if you had just said there was no.
But ru- but under the Senate bill. It's eight thousand max with no, no floor, if you will. But the House bill does keep supervisory unions.
The House version does not keep.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, the Senate versions?
Yes.
So the Senate version keeps supervisory units.
And we're talking fiscal year twenty-eight?
Twenty. Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, fiscal year twenty-nine.
Right.
Would be the soonest this would be implemented.
Is Vermont's education solely funded off property taxes, Mr. Ross?
Yeah.
It's not, where where do, where? Where do they generate other revenue for the tech, for the education improvement, where's it come from, oh?
I'm not, I'm not the expert, I I apologize for that, um, but I I believe, you know, there's um other sales tax, other, um. Lottery rooms and meals. So other other care is not solely property tax.
I look, I had, I had actually thought we'd talk about this in more detail under the Rural School Community Alliance, and we, and but, I mean, I'm happy to have it. Now, if you, I I know you have other things you want to report on, so what's everybody's pleasure, do you want to spend some continued time on? This proposed legislation now? Mary's nodding, yes.
Well, I think it's a good idea, I mean, if we're going to talk about, you know, finish the top gun, that one thing. May be helpful.
I'm I'm happy to do that, well, so, um, if I can add then to what Andy said, I actually literally have spent the last two days there, I've just driven in tonight. Straight from Montpelier. Uh, and it it has been uh really fascinating um to be a part of it. The House and the Senate versions are pretty dramatically different, so when I lived, left. They were in the conference committee, they had made a decision for three senators and three representatives to sit across the table from each other. And try to figure out where they could find common ground, but even more dramatic than what's happening now was on Friday. A motion, um, an amendment to the Senate version, which the Rural School Community Alliance was much more supportive of. The Senate version allowed supervisory unions, it did not dissolve school boards, it did not have um minimum. Class sizes, uh, it 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 just was a lot more. Respectful of educators and communities, uh, than I believe the House version is around governance, uh, in particular. But interestingly, on Friday, Senator Hardy. Um, made an amendment to replace what the Senate. Education Committee had been working on for weeks with the House version. So brought that in, and that was really quite dramatic. And they ended up voting that uh out with some additional changes. So we have really kind of a cobbled together um version right now. I remain really, really concerned about the governance piece, I remain concerned about this. Continued commitment to consolidation without evidence that it'll save money, and it will disrupt so much. Um, in in terms of people schooling and how it's structured and and all of that. So we keep working to protect small schools. To make sure that. Elementary students are educated close to home, so that we don't see school closures and kids put on long bus rides like that. Um, we're, we're really advocating for supervisory unions. Because, because they help to serve democracy. They allow for for independent town school districts, or like Athens and Grafton, a combined, a collaborative that you created yourselves. That you and govern, you, the townspeople of Athens and Grafton, can responsibly manage that that school, but you're part of a supervisory union. Where we can look for cost efficiencies, and we do. Unfortunately, transportation is one that usually works better than it's working right now, but food services would be another uh example of that. And some people think that supervisory unions are only there. Because they allow for tuitioning to. Private schools, that's not what it's about at all in the big picture, it's really about that combination. Of local, some people are calling it local control, I refer to it as local oversight and citizen engagement. That's what we get to have when we have our 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 town school districts um like that. So we don't know where it's um going to end up, but they're really in the throes of it, and they're supposed to come up with. An agreed upon bill together if they can, the Senate and the House by this Friday morning. So we'll know a whole lot more. In the meantime, uh, the rural, I was invited to speak to the Rural Caucus this morning, so, and that was at the invitation of our. Representative Michelle Bosna, uh, who actually also introduced me on the floor yesterday, because she wanted to have. Other legislators, if they had an interest in what the rural communities were interested in, to know that I was there and could talk with them uh about that. But one of the things that you all know, that we were very early in joining the alliance, as of today, we're up to one hundred one towns. So it just continues growing, and why is that, it's because communities throughout the state are worried about losing. Our small schools, we're worried about school closures, we're worried about so much consolidation that then again, schools are closed. Uh, and and for for me, that also has huge economic impact. If you don't have an elementary school. In a town, you're not going to have young families. And that in turn really negatively impacts the economy.
Well, how is that proposed plan supposedly going to work, are you going to bus? If they start closing schools in these small towns, are you busing them from Broadworld to here, from Springfield to here?
Right, right, right.
From Hartford to here, I I mean, that's, that's an hour-long bus ride or an hour-and-a-half-long bus ride for kids, that makes no sense.
We know that, so by apologies, at this kind of a meeting, we we don't get to have the public discourse, I kind of let you. Do that a little bit, but we are, I'm happy to stay and talk with you afterwards, but right now, we need to. Uh, go ahead with the, with the meeting, but your question is exactly right, you're absolutely right. So that's it for that, we'll keep you posted, I think some, oh, I I think what I'll also add that, um. The. Vermont Superintendent's Association, the Vermont Principals Association, and the Vermont School Boards Association. Whereas we agree with them on many things, in this particular case, they have not been supportive of supervisory unions. And as a result of that, um. As of last night, one of the largest supervisory unions in the state has voted not to no longer be a part of the V S B A. And to not send their dues uh there. Uh, and I believe that William Southeast is discussing that right now.
The V S P, the School Boards Association.
Exactly, the V S B A, the Vermont School Boards Association. I actually um spoke with the executive directors of all three of those today. And, you know, and just said, you know, we we get so much value from these organizations, and it makes no sense to me. To have you publicly state a position. As if it represents all of your members, you know, and and you have done that consistently with the. Superintendent's Association.
Forty-six.
So, so there are, there are a lot of factors at play here, I will say there are many, many goodwill people in the legislature, I'm seeing people be very thoughtful, I'm seeing them be. Concerned about the impact of all of this, but we'll, we'll see, the governor is pushing for action now. And a lot of people are saying, we really need to be able to understand the impact, one of the things I asked for again this morning at the caucus. Is use Vermont data, take a look at what actually the school districts are spending, I want them to look at from twenty seventeen to the present. Because then you could look at the impact of all the legislation that's been passed along the way and that hasn't been evaluated. So, and 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 once again, to be able to test the assumption that consolidation saves money. Whereas we have, we have got data through the Vermont uh Rural School Community Alliance. That shows that those forcibly merged districts are tending to spend more than the supervisory unions.
What about educational outcome beyond money, I mean, let's talk about, the goal here is to educate. Our young people, so that we have a society of educated people.
Absolutely, and and so the premise is, how can we have the best educational quality for our kids at a cost that taxpayers can't afford? And to protect democracy in the process, to have civic engagement uh at the local level. So that's the latest with that.
Just two things I'll add, I I, and and I know that there's. Obviously, all these different parties have different opinions and stuff, the Vermont Superintendent's Association has. Consistently said they want what's best for students, and that is the most important thing, um, and. There's been some op-eds that say that, su- you know, super, the Superintendent's Association is only worried about, you know. Making big districts because we get rid of boards and things like that, that is not the position, the position is what is best for kids, and I think. There is a lot of common ground on where where things to be found, so, and while we, there are differs of. Supervisor Union versus Supervisor Districts and things of that nature. Um, that has been consistent, and when I push back against Supervisor Districts. That is clear that everyone, their intentions are best for kids, so, uh, that's the other thing. The other piece that's been talked about in some op-eds. Um, along the foundational um funding formula is an allowable growth. Um, formula that I'm still trying to dig into to fully understand, um, what I've heard is. It's maybe a little better than the foundational formula, but it really still doesn't provide. The same dollars that are needed, so, um, I'm just putting that out there from here, that that is a second one that is up in an op-ed that I saw, so. But more to come on that.
Back to your superintendent.
All right, so, um. Good, bad news, uh, Rob Welts, who uh was the uh board chair for uh. The high school board here, um, had applied and was uh offered the athletic director position uh for the high school and the middle school. Um, again, I say good, bad, um, it's, it's. It's been great having Rob as as the board chair, and we did have to resign from that position uh as the board chair. Um, but we're excited to bring him on, uh, he comes with a wealth of experience in 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 the field of athletics, um, and so. Um. You know, I know he will be missed on on the board and whatnot, so, um, but that will fall to the Rockingham Board. Um, I'm looking for a replacement at this time, so. Uh, after-school programming, uh, after we had our last meeting, I had a lot of conversations with our principals, uh, we looked into some things, um. We uh originally had given some information that independent districts really couldn't do what they needed to do, wanted to do. Uh, independently, that everything had to come out of the S U. Um. We've got some uh guidance uh from council that uh independent school districts could. Uh, to look at that, I know that the Westminster District is looking at.
Thank you, good night.
The Westminster District is looking at some uh summer programming still. Um, but so, um, some principals wanted to move forward and and do that, so, uh, we've given permission for, um. For uh principals to look forward to programming if they wanted to work with an outside vendor, so like at Central Elementary School. Uh, they are working with Y Aspire to offer a program that used to be offered there. Um, I, I know that uh the Grafton School Board has discussed it, um, prior to um. This new information, um, but may look to do some programming, I know that, uh, I bet, uh, Westminster is also looking at. Um, some after-school programming uh that they could do, same thing with Saxons River, the middle school. Um, so, um, we felt that. I felt. Knowing where we were with the the potential of the Esser um Clawback. Um, and knowing uh that we did not um budget for that, to come in with a a proposal of. Close to three hundred thousand dollars of deficit spending was not fiscally responsible on our part, where. Uh, like with Y Aspire, that's a a zero cost. To uh the Rockingham School District, so it's an opportunity that, um. They, we just provide the space for them, and so I know Westminster is potentially speaking with another group to do something similar type of thing, so. Um. So that's, um, just wanted to report back on that. Um. On the Esser Clawback, uh, we have, I have pushed up. Uh, requests for extensions uh on a majority of our, um. Um. Origin, ones that were originally um approved, uh, mostly around our construction, um. And I'm very thankful that, um, Bernie Sanders' office had had offered to provide some assistance in writing. Um, and wordsmithing, and so we took advantage of that, and it was, it was great to have a a partner in that. Um, and we sent those up to the state. Um. A week and a half ago, um, and I haven't heard back from the state, they haven't pushed it back down to say you need to fix something, um, because that's what they were doing, so, um. There was a meeting today, I wasn't able to attend, I had to reach out to, um. The Deputy Secretary just to see that, the intent was that they were going to push those forward on Friday to the federal government, or. Uh, we do have a couple more that we are still pushing up, um, just trying to get some data on that stuff, so. Um, but, um, as far as, because I know this came up in some concerns, our consider consolidated federal funding, which is our title grants. Um, we did get our allocation, which was very close to what we expected it to be, so, um. So there was no, we didn't lose a ton. We might have lost a hundred bucks or something like that, or gained a hundred dollars. It was a small swing. But the concern will be in the next fiscal year. Just to be very, I don't know, has a lot to do with this current budget going through Congress right now in Washington, so. But the, and I think one of the pieces in that federal that may be an issue is the Medicaid. That we get Medicaid money back for I E P services that are provided. So we're still digging through that to try and figure out if that's going to be impacted, so. We did receive a waiver. We had two snow days, but they were pretty severe days. And so we did apply for a waiver and that was granted. And so our last student day is Tuesday, June 17. That'll be an early release day for our students. And then our last day for all staff will be Wednesday, June 18. And we have Juneteenth for June 19th. As they still have that as a holiday. It's in some of our collective bargaining agreements, but we do honor that day. Feel it's important. And so we were grateful to have the waiver because it doesn't make us have that day off in the middle of this whole thing, so. And then what's just listed there are just our end of the year celebrations. That's really what it's all about, right? We have graduation coming up here at the high school. That's Thursday, June 12. The middle school will have their move-up ceremony on Monday, June 16. Central Elementary will have theirs on June 17. Saxons River will be on June 17. Westminster Center will have their success night on June 10. And Grafton Elementary will have their move-up ceremony on Wednesday, June 11. So exciting times, comes as a flurry right now, so it's. But if any of you can make it, I know that the kids in the future are going to be grateful.
So any questions for Andy about any of those many topics that we just covered?
I love having it all, just getting it and digesting it. It's just, it's what we need to see.
Details, that's great.
You might not have this, Andy, but do you have a general sense of how much funding comes from Medicaid? Like ballpark, if not, no.
$250,000 a year?
Diminishing amount.
Yeah, it has to do with the level of services that are provided. So a student who might need toileting and some other things, they're, they get ranked the highest. And it ebbs and flows, but I'd say that's a number.
And those monies, this S U dedicated those monies to the early childhood.
Correct.
So does that mean that that's then declining, potentially declining revenue for our early childhood program?
If we were to lose those funds, it would definitely be an impact, yes.
But we're expecting it to decline, so.
Yes.
So that's kind of how we budget it.
Correct. So I think the model that we have in place will provide funding as we move forward. If, you know, as it's currently written and as families are signing up. But I think that the, having the Medicaid money there is that cushion is really an important piece, so.
Does the Medicaid money cover anything else? Does it provide revenue for anything other than early childhood?
It is, this S U has dedicated 100% of those funds to early child.
Okay. It'll come in.
And it pays for the Medicaid clerk, I think.
Correct, sorry, yes. Funds, funds the clerk that goes after the dollars to bring the dollars back in.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the other stream of Medicaid is the guidance Medicaid, but that's the nurses.
School nurses and school counselors can't. We do get some dollars back for that. It's not a lot. That's through a third party administrator who does that clawback on those dollars. That goes into our general fund and just kind of offsets the bottom line as it comes back in.
Okay. All right. Are we ready then to move to the policies with a long list?
Yes. So the Policy Committee met. Mary was named chair of the Policy Committee. And we met to go through, to try and get a lot of our policies up to date. So a lot of them, some of them are 2009, 2008, 2009. They should be updated every three years. So trying to get those. The plan was to come with blocks in the different areas. So in A, that has to do with school board governance. So to go through them, looking at model policies and looking at where the fine tuning is on those different pieces for us. There were some policies that were discussed around some more, some topics that needed some more diving into. And so we were hopeful that we were going to have a couple of those up here for you today for consideration, but I don't think that those are ready yet to bring for consideration. So Policy Committee is looking to meet again. So again, these are all around governance for the board. And so A20 just has to do with board meetings and agenda preparation. A21 is on public participation in board meetings. A22 is on notice of non-discrimination. A23 is community engagement and vision. A24, board superintendent relationship. A30, role in adoption of the school board. And A31 is the board member education. I don't know how you want to take them, if you want to. Questions or some of them are lengthy, some of them are short.
I just have one question.
Yes.
Some of them seem like they were needed to be kind of adopted locally because it will talk about, you know, your meeting date, such, so, what.
I don't remember specifically about that issue. But we did read every single word out loud and had a lot of ears. And it was a combination of virtual and in-person. And we did have some virtual issues, which is just the way it is. But I think it's really important to recognize that the Policy Committee did review every single word. There are almost no changes to these, but the ones that we did not bring forward simply aren't ready. We're still in a lot of discussion about cell phone policy and more to talk about there.
But I think an answer to your question, the goal is to then take these to each individual board.
That was my question. It seems, sometimes their policies is clearly, it could be the whole S U on behalf of the member districts. And these, some of them seem more like, you have to go down to them.
Yeah, we will bring them to each board.
That was my question.
Did we have some discussion at some point in time about the sequencing? Do they go to the local boards first and then come to the S U? Or do they come to the S U? For some reason that flammers. And I don't know if it was on policies or what topics. In the last four years, we've brought them to the S U. And then if we needed to bring them down, we've done that. I can't speak to prior to that, but. Yeah, I mean, my preference is the S U, you know. Seems like to me like the S U replaced this, like, okay, we've reviewed. We think there's a good board, the district, and then the individual boards speak to it.
Almost like an affirmation.
Yeah.
It makes sense to me.
Yes.
Seems easier on the local. Those of us on both have to do it twice.
Right. Mary, I think it'd be appropriate if you wanted to make a recommendation as the chair of that committee. Great. I make a motion that we approve A20, 21, 22, 23, 24, A30, and A31 policies. So motion on the floor. Any additional comments or questions? All right, then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the votes. Okay, and Kathy, your vote, please?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. So, and thanks to the Policy Committee, Mary, and thanks on being willing to chair. All right, then, with that, we've already addressed the Rural School Community Alliance. I think we can leave that unless there are any additional questions. And so let's go to Director's comments. Kathy, anything from you tonight?
No, just enjoying the nice sunny day.
So, thank you. Okay, very good. Yeah, right. Paul, any comments?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rick.
I just hope everyone fills out Ricky's form about diligence. As I sit here in the meeting, I told him, maybe it's because I am technology friendly. I really appreciate it. It's nice to have everything linked in one place. It's easy to, I find it very helpful.
Great.
Oh, I just want to say how grateful I am, Cheryl, for your time up in Montpelier, helping us know the lay of the land up there. I just feel like, I said this to a few other members last week, it just feels like the Wild West where there are no rules. And it's just, you're like holding on to the table all the time so they don't fall off. I'll be patient with us, because we try to figure this all out.
I had a little bit of trouble following things here because like with the people that we were interviewing, I didn't have them all on the list that's here. So I don't know if there was somewhere.
I will own that, and I know it's Director Scott. I will own that because I was out of town last week. I wasn't able to meet with everybody. And so Nicole worked really hard to get them on my schedule in the last, yesterday. So we brought a lot of people that didn't make it. So I will own that and I apologize.
That's understandable. But thank you also for asking, you know? That's helpful too, because we need to support one another in this process. Karen?
Well, I thought it was a good meeting, frankly, that it was clear for me. And I repeat the comment about having both of you, I would say, I mean, your willingness as a private citizen to go up to Montpelier and to be able to describe these things. And Andy, I feel like, you know, your background in this as well, it's a tough time to be thinking about this, given everything else that's going on. So I only wanted to say that. And, but I feel like this meeting, you know, was smooth, frankly. And we've got some wonderful people that are coming to be in the schools that we have.
Yeah.
And I think that's very exciting. So I have a lot of sadness also at the moment.
Just really excited about all the people that we're bringing onboard that we have been able to. I think I participated in some interviews several years ago where we didn't have very many candidates or we were like really digging to find some folks. And it, I think, is such a testament to the hiring that's happened since then, that we have so many good people who are building momentum and getting, I mean, just momentum around everything. It's exciting to hear about what's happening in our school. So I'm really, really grateful for that continued, and all the work that everybody has done to make sure we have really good candidates in a really good place that they want to be.
Senator, I want to echo Karen's comments. I completely agree.
So a question to be sure that you have the contact information for the parents who came in tonight. Yes, so they need to follow. I would really, you know, I'd like to find out more, you know, about that later on. You know, when you, after you, you know, get that info and so forth. Because if, and here we are, going past my time, I'm sorry. But I really thought, they were really to come here and be really concerned not only for their own child and other children. So I would love to hear more. And I know Andy will follow up. And, you know, to the point made about having good candidates come in, you know, I think it warrants saying again that Andy has built a great team. And it's that team that is attracting people, starting with your own leadership. But it really is something we're grateful for. So, thank you. And with that, date and time of the next meeting? Cheryl, did you talk to Kim? Oh, no, but thank you very much. Oh, no, yeah, she, she was first. Yeah, she was first, yeah.
It will be June 8th.
June 8th. After school's out. Everybody good with that? I'm good. Okay.
That's the same date as any of the celebrations?
No.
Okay.
That is, well, I, so, no.
Last day.
He'll be so.
When is the middle school moving out?
Sixteenth. No, see, I have it on, I have my calendar, it's the 18th because that was the original date before they had to change, so.
All right, well, with that, thanks to everyone. And we stand adjourned at 7:05. Thank you.